And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the approval of the agenda for tonight. Is there anyone who wants to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sampson, seconded by Riddle. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carried. We'll start out with our customary spotlight on recognition, and I'll look to Dr. Flathman for sharing this recognition.
We have an Employee of the Month, and I'm going to talk slowly because the Employee of the Month is a para-professional from Stevenson Elementary. This is Nancy Thol, and her name and picture will show up here very shortly. Nancy has been a part of, has been a para at Stevenson for the past two years. She shows great patience, tact, and is highly skilled in her problem-solving. She shows passion, compassion, and grace with every student she meets, and they look up to her as a role model. She is principled and works to understand her students each and every day. She is a delight to work with and a team, and a great team player at Stevenson Elementary. So congratulations to June's Employee of the Month, Nancy Thol.
Thank you. Next, would you like to tell us about our 2018 graduation?
Okay. At the end of the school year, there are great celebrations, you know, from the VPK kids graduating and exhibitions going on in 4th grade and, and all of these events. But obviously, the most, the culminating event that happened this year was the 60th commencement that took place at Roy Wilkins on May 31st. And so tonight, here are just a couple of the kind of highlights of what that class of 2018 were about. 197 graduates, that included about 22 that have graduated throughout the year from the ALC. We had 18 full IB diploma candidates, and that's probably the largest IB full diploma kids that we've had. That means that they have taken six college-level courses over the course of the past two years with external examinations that go along with those. We had 26 IB scholars. That means that those students had four or more IB courses with external exams as well. We had two students that graduated with an associate degree from Anoka-Ramsey. 23 Avid graduates, and that's our second class year of graduates in Avid. And last year, I don't believe there were 20 of the kids. So we have kind of moved into a kind of a full class. 14 Presidential Education Awards. These are students that typically are, you know, 3.5 GPA and higher, and this is really something that our principal gets to award. 25 students graduated with honors, which means they're 3.25 to 3.49, and 17 students with 3.5 to 3.75, and then 27 students with the highest honors, which is 3.75 and above. You know, this evening, I've said this a couple of times, you know, graduations are always very special, but this was an exceptional class for me because 13 years ago, when I started, these kids were in kindergarten. So that was kind of fun to just kind of have traveled with them, their journey here. But I also want to commend the class for taking some time and thanking not only their own parents, but each other in that journey. And almost every one of the students who spoke there that night really highlighted their gratitude and gratefulness for being a part of Fridley. So, go Tigers!
Thank you. Well, I'm going to continue on the graduation theme. There's a tradition amongst the school board to provide a scholarship to one of the senior students each year. And so the Fridley, I'd like to announce our, the Fridley School Board Scholarship winner. And this was a $600 scholarship awarded to Victoria Ramirez. She will be, she will be attending the University of Minnesota at the Twin Cities campus, and she plans to major in sociology of law, criminology, and deviance. So, in 10, her 10-year goal for Victoria is she hopes to have finished law school and be working as an attorney. So you may have an opportunity to interact with her at some phase of your life. That could be on, you know, the positive-negative side, however that goes. But just really excited to be able to contribute to her future in that way as a school board, and excited for the plans that she has. And I want to mention as well that this year, $110,000 in scholarships were given out to the senior class. Of, 35% of the, this year's senior class graduated with honors. And the scholarship amount for this class, I think that's the highest amount any class has ever been given. And it again speaks to the community that surrounds this school district and the commitment they have to the futures of the children attending our school and the students, and that connection back to Fridley School. I know a number of those scholarships come from alumni of Fridley Schools. So, again, congratulations to Victoria and a great tribute to the Fridley community in their contributions to supporting our senior class. Before we go on to the superintendent and staff reports and business action items, I really have to take this opportunity to announce that this is Superintendent Peggy Flathman's final board meeting with the Fridley School District.
And she's teared up by that, you can tell.
And so she too, like the class that she followed from kindergarten up, is graduating from Fridley this year. And graduating to retirement and whatever else. I don't see her sitting on the couch eating bonbons. But we, we wish you the best of luck in this next phase of your life, and your contributions will live on here for a long time. And you will, I know, continue to make contributions in other ways in the world when you leave here. So just want to, we've had a couple of celebrations, but want to make that formal announcement tonight to thank you for all your service and dedication and sharing your gifts with us here at Fridley.
Well, and thank you to this board. There are a number of people who have come and gone in the 13 years, and they've all been incredible support to me as well as to the whole school. And that is, as you said before, with, you know, you know, the monetary contribution that this place, you know, gave our students this year is just a small representation of the overall commitment that this place has. You are always connected to Fridley once you've touched this place. So I am grateful, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to invite up Mary Mueller. We're going to have a presentation on our nutritional services. And who thought that this could be exciting? But Mary, you make this topic exciting every time you're here.
Come on, Mary.
So we're, we're really looking forward to this.
Okay. I know, it's coming. So while it's coming, I'm Mary Mueller, the Director of Nutritional Services, and this is my seventh year with Fridley Public Schools. And it has been a really, really wonderful six years. And this one, I think, will be just as fun, exciting, and we have a lot of stuff to talk about and tell you about. So here we go, we have our first slide. Those pictures are from our program. And then on the right-hand side, you can see we have listed all of our partners, and every year that list grows. And it's, like I said, always helpful to have partners in the endeavors that you take on. Then in the, oh, I forgot, here we go, guys. This year, we have two new nutritional services additions, stellar new additions. Maria Anderson joined our department in May of 2007, and Maggie Maggio joined us in August of 2017. And since then, we have not sat still or done anything that's slow or not moving fast. So, do I just do this, Laurie? Okay. Like I said in the first slide, one of our partners that we have had in the past and that we move forward to have is The Good Acre in Falcon Heights, which is a food hub. And we're very fortunate to be able to continue this partnership because they have private funding that helps not just us, but other school districts as well. So we have been able to, this was our second year, we'll move into our third year. We have been able to partner with them to purchase local produce, which is a difficult thing to do for a small district on their own. Because if you're big, you can just call up a farmer and say, "I want you to plant all of my green peppers," whatever. But it's a little harder when you're small. So The Good Acre's a food hub that's making that possible for smaller school districts. So we have partnered with them to purchase local produce. And then the other thing they do is provide some really cool training for our staff, culinary training. So not only have we been able to improve staff skills in food preparation, but we also end up developing some really cool recipes that really do help make kids want to eat Brussels sprouts. It's funny when you put a honey sriracha sauce on a Brussels sprout, all of a sudden, it's much more enticing. So the other thing we did last summer was we did construction in both the middle school cafe and Stevenson. This is just kind of a snapshot of one of our new serving lines, our new salad bar line, which, you know, our signage is great, fresh and delicious, and the kids are enjoying that as well as the staff at the middle school. At Stevenson, we kind of mimicked the, what we did at Hayes the year before. The staff at Stevenson decided to have a contest and name the cafe, so you can see here the fun graphics, and they named the cafe, The Riverfront Cafe. Another thing that we rolled out this year, a couple years ago, we got a grant from Anoka County to start organics and recycling at our elementary schools. So we rolled that out at Hayes and Stevenson a year ago. And then this last fall, we started at the middle school. And apparently, there's not a lot of schools in Anoka County doing this. So we got featured in the Community Connection Newsletter for Fridley. We got an award from Anoka County. So it's been really exciting, but once again, talk about partners. We couldn't have done this without our awesome Buildings and Grounds staff or the support of our admin team at the middle school. What we had to do at the, those of you who have, who have or have had middle schoolers might guess that middle schoolers are a little more difficult to train than elementary kids. So we had our nutrition coordinators work with the student council. The kids did their own video. We got kids to train kids. So it was a process, but they've come a long way. So that's been kind of exciting. Then another thing about what happened this year with our Good Acre partner is they got a grant from USDA and invited us to be a part of that, which meant that instead of our training just being, just being once a year, it's ongoing throughout the year. So every month, we got to send staff to The Good Acre in Falcon Heights to do a little bit more training. And then this year, we added all the marketing around our fresh produce, whether it was Brussels sprouts, sweet potatoes, delicata squash, parsnips, which were pretty new to most of our kids. And that really helped when you're talking to the kids in the morning about what the new things are going to be for lunch, and then giving them a sticker if they try it. And so we were fortunate then, they paid through this USDA grant for all of our staff to be trained throughout the entire year. So we didn't, that didn't come out of our budget at all. And we've reaped those benefits. Then, oh, then in October, we moved into National School Lunch Week. And as part of our stellar, our marketing team, our nutrition coordinators, we got staff involved this year for National School Lunch Weeks. We had guest servers, so you can see principals, teachers wearing chef hats, we did special aprons. And it was really amazing to see the reaction from kids when their, when their teachers and their principals are serving lunch to them. So, and that was something then we continued to repeat throughout the school year, inviting them to be guest servers. And we did this at all of our schools. So it was really, it was really fun. Okay. Then the other thing, the, the first part of the school year is always very active. In, in the fall, in October, because it's apple month, we actually partnered with Ship to do taste testing at the middle school. We decided that our, that, we were just assuming that all kids know there's a plethora of types of apples that come from Minnesota. But we found out by doing this taste testing at our middle school that that's really not the case. So Pine Tree Apple Orchard, which is a local apple orchard in White Bear Lake, provided the apples, and we, Maggie and Maria provided all the, the testing information, and the kids got to vote on their favorite apples. We spent two weeks going into the classrooms. And it was, even the teachers said that it was really interesting to, to hear what middle schoolers had to say about apples. And they, then they discovered what apples they liked, which ones they don't. And then that we hope they go home and talk to their parents about that. Another apple thing that happens every October is the Great Lakes Apple Crunch. And that's something, again, that we marketed to all of our kids, and it's on the same day across the country, you have a million kids crunching an apple all at the same time. So we took pictures, we gave them stickers. We made it a really big deal so that they were excited about eating apples that day. Then we, at the, actually, we don't just have new menu items at the high school, but the high school's kind of our testing ground for recipes and new menu items. So we've been experimenting a lot with the new equipment that we've gotten through our construction renovations and rolled out, I'm sure you know, you all have kids, that, you know, bowls are a huge thing. So you know, we did Asian bowls, Chipotle bowls, grain bowls. We rolled out all different kinds of flatbread pizzas. And these are all things we're making from scratch. So this is our emphasis for, for scratch-made foods. We kind of test things at the high school, and then we roll it to the middle school and the elementary because we probably have our most trained staff at our high school. So that was really fun. This too was one of the reasons so many more staff are eating at the high school. Because, you know, now we're doing a lot more marketing, and we look a little bit more like a restaurant at lunchtime. So middle school and high school graphics, these are pictures of some of the graphics we added to our, our cafe environment to make it more pleasant for kids to eat lunch every day. Oh, of course, we all know we had the Super Bowl this year, so we couldn't let that pass us by. We had to get involved in what was going on in the North. So Maggie created a Super Bowl menu for us, and the kids really did get excited. So what we did is we checked out what were they serving at the, at the Dome for Super Bowl, and we did Tachos, which is teeter-tot nachos. We did something as simple as a chili cheese dog, and then we did chicken and waffles, which I was surprised, kids had not seen these things. But again, we had guest servers, we had an increase in participation. It was a really fun week, especially in January, you know? Everybody's getting a little tired of what's going on. And then we have been fortunate enough to receive a grant from the Chef Van Foundation. And this year, we finally had our onsite assessment visit where the team spent four days with us, really evaluating every single thing that we do inside and out. And this slide kind of talks about what their goals are in terms of what they provide to a district. Our job now, after they've been here and given us a report, is to come up with an action plan so that we can qualify for the $50,000 Systems Assistant Grant that they award, and I have no doubt that we'll be getting that. Whoops! Okay, you guys, what did I do? There we go. We also partnered with the Minnesota Department of Agriculture. We, Maggie wrote a grant to, for us to get some additional equipment. So again, we'd worked towards that goal of more scratch cooking. So we did get a grant, we were able to purchase a very fancy oven made by a company called Rationell. It's a combination steam and dry heat oven. And then the other thing we purchased was a RoboKu, which is a commercial food processor on steroids. So it does things very fast, very efficiently, and allows us to use local vegetables instead of buying things already processed. So we're very excited about using that. Those things were just installed in the spring. Ah, our nutrition coordinators also worked on our student wellness this year with some guidance from Amina. And we're working towards goals in our wellness policy to be sure that it's not just that we do student, that we're considering student wellness in all aspects of our program. So we made sure all of our vending machines have just smart snacks in them, which is certain criteria that we need to meet from USDA. And we also ended up turning off our vending machines during the school day so that kids weren't just eating snack food all day long. The other thing it, we worked on was the, the, we worked with middle school and high school staff to talk about using food as a reward. And is that really something we want to do? And it went very well, and we're going to continue to revisit that as we move ahead in our, in our wellness policy. So again, that collaboration is, we think is really important. We just think this is a fun slide. We've had a lot more adults eating, especially at the high school this year. We've had like a 228% increase. And we think it's due to the fact that David Weber and Matt Weber eat every single day and tell everybody how great the food is. And now we have Matt, number two, Matt Hammer is also eating. So the word has gotten out.
Those guys know how to influence.
Yes, they definitely know how to influence. And they, they, they sing our praises, so that's really fortunate for us. So we just think this is a really fun, fun slide. The Fresh Fruit and Vegetable is an ongoing grant program that we have to apply for every year. It's, we've only been able to qualify at Stevenson. It's based on the percentage of free and reduced students we have. It is a snack that we serve three times a week. It's just a fresh veg or a fresh fruit. It's either in the morning or the afternoon. And the whole idea is to increase student awareness about things they maybe haven't seen before. So we do things like dates, starfruit, kumquats, romanesco, interesting things that they may have never heard of before. And we just heard we got this grant again for next year. So we'll continue to do that. This slide just really summarizes our breakfast participation for all our kids served, as well as our free and reduced kids. And it just kind of indicates, what you can see here is when we started Universal Breakfast back in 1415, that's when we really bumped our breakfast participation. And even though enrollment ebbs and flows just a little bit, we've really been able to sustain that participation overall. Probably for breakfast, one of our biggest challenges is accessibility, and the middle school is where we're having the most challenge with that. But next year, we're adding a second breakfast time. So we think that our participation will go back up. Plus, as I said before, middle schoolers are our most challenging group. They're very social, and even though breakfast is right there when they come in in the morning, they'd much prefer to talk. So it's hard to corral them to the breakfast carts we have in the hallway. And then this is just about lunch participation, and our Chef Van team commented on how great our participation is, really at both breakfast and lunch. So again, this just summarizes by school that we do still have strong participation, and we continue to try and improve that. This year, we added, you can see in the red, we added breakfast down at FCC for our childcare program. And we added an extended school day snack program at our ALC program. So we're trying to really bring all those kids who really need to be eating at different times of the day into various different programs. After-school snack, this is really just a summary of how many snacks we serve to kids after school. We got started a little bit late this year because our Learning Academy got restructured, but we're still going strong with serving after-school snack to a lot of kids in our school district. And we think that really is a nice bridge for kids who are there late. I think as we move ahead to next year and really into the future, one of the things we're looking at doing is starting a dinner program. And there is, this is a fairly new program, which really is what we call, what we're going to call a mega snack. And so we have so many kids, our after-school kids who now come from our elementaries over to FCC and are there till 6 o'clock. And then at ALC, we have those kids who are extended day, coming to night classes. So this gives them just a little bit more, you know, sustainable food. And so we're going to roll that out at those two schools, and then maybe we can expand that to, to other after-school programs as well. We really are pushing hard to do more scratch cooking. We have recipe testing set up all summer long that we're going to be doing. We've got additional staff culinary training set up for fall and into the school year. We're updating our back-of-the-house procedures, meaning we're getting new software and trying to become more fiscally efficient. We're adding second chance breakfast at the middle school, which is a second time for kids to have the opportunity to eat breakfast, like after first or second hour. And then we're going to continue our student wellness work in school. So, sorry for taking up, thank you for allowing us to be here. It's always just really exciting. And we really are movers and shakers. That's all there is to it. So anytime you want to know about food, just knock on our door.
Well, you're making me hungry. I think we're going to adjourn fairly quickly here. Great report, very
Thanks, guys.
creative approach to getting healthy food in front of our students. We all know that trying to think on an empty stomach is not very easy. So it's an important aspect of their education. And Mr. Hammer, you get to follow that fun presentation again.
The dust doesn't settle underneath their feet, does it? Not at all. My name's Matthew Hammer, I'm the Director of Finance for the school district, and I'm here tonight presenting our adopted budget for 1819. Per statute, required as a school district to adopt this by the end of June. And here tonight, we have the presentation of what we're looking at as we go into FY 1819. So our budget planning process revolves around our five strategic goals. Improving academic achievement, using the most effective instructional strategies, maintaining a safe and positive learning environment, building financial stability, and then making sure we're improving parent and school partnerships. This picture right here is, if Peggy was going to stay another 13 years, this is our VPK preschool kids graduating, one of our first cohorts that are coming out of our actual FCC. Last year, we had around 40 students that came out of our Stevenson Elementary that went into kindergarten. This year, we're going to have about 120 that are going to come out of our community center and hopefully move into our, our kindergartens at both Hayes and Stevenson. Then on the backside, 13 years later, we have our graduating seniors. So those kids starting and coming to us through our first cohort at FCC. Hopefully, this is where they're at 13 years from now. As we look at our overall budget, it's driven off of enrollment. Everything we do is revolving off those enrollment trends and what we're forecasting. That's where our aides come from, and that's where our forecast for how our budget is developed. Our enrollment right now is a little bit of a bell curve. If you look, we've been an upward trend through 2016, '17. We're estimating ending around 3,020 students at the end of '17, '18. And then in, for next year, we're projecting at this point time, 2963 is our overall enrollment E12. This is our breakdown by overall grade level for, so the burgundy is our K4, the yellow is our 5.8, which would be our middle school level, and the orange is our high school from a trend perspective. So fairly consistent over time, but that's our trend from starting in 1415 to where we're projecting to be in 1819 as we go into this school year. The general fund, unassigned fund balance is our measure that we use as our barometer for where we're at as a financial health. The Fridley School District has an unassigned fund balance. The Fridley School District has an unassigned fund balance percentage that's projected to be at 7.02% at the end of 1819. School district board policy is to make sure that we keep that fund balance percentage on an unassigned level between 7 and 10%. So we're forecasting at the end of FY18, we'll be right at the bottom level of that, but within that range. Here's how we break out our revenues. This is our general fund revenues. For FY19, we're projecting at this point in time, state revenues will be about 80% of our overall revenues, not quite 81%, at $36,153. Local revenues make up about 17% of our overall aid that we receive in the general fund. That's mostly made up of our tax levy. And federal revenues make up just shy of 3% of overall revenues. Those numbers have stayed pretty static over the last few years. Again, here's our general fund budget. And from an unassigned revenue and unassigned expenditure perspective, we're projecting at the end of FY1819, a surplus of about $10,000. It keeps our overall fund balance percentage above board policy to just over 7%. This is the breakdown of our programmatic budget. The next slide is kind of the slide that is the measure that we try to keep ourselves to. 80% or 80 cents on the dollar goes directly to support students, whether that's through instruction, transportation, all those services that touch students every day as part of our general fund budget. The other portions are about four cents on the dollar goes through administration, 5% or five cents on the dollar goes through direct district support services, and then 11 cents on the dollar, which is becoming a little bit larger percentage with our LTFM, Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Program. And that aid is our sites, buildings, and other.
Matthew, can you tell us just a few of the things that go into district support services?
Yeah, so that's our technology, human resources, finance, those types of programs. And administrative, that's superintendents, principals, those types of expenditures.
Thank you.
This is another slash of, and look at our expense budget in fiscal year 19. This just basically highlights that we're a people business, huge human capital expenditure from our overall expenditure budget. About 75% of our budget's made up of salaries and benefits overall, with the other major portion going to purchase services, which is largely made up of contracted services, mainly contracted transportation for our school district. When we look at other funds, our food service fund, which Mary has done a great job and just gave an outstanding presentation of all the things that they're doing in food service. Our food service projection this time is a deficit spend of about $10,000. That's made up of some capital expenditures that we're forecasting in Fund II or our food service fund. But still overall, but as we forecast to the end of FY19, in June of 19, that there's a healthy fund balance in our food service fund, which is important as we move forward, that that fund is self-sustaining and can do the things that Mary wants to do from a capital investment perspective. Our community service fund is, or our community ed fund that we call it, is projecting a deficit spend of about $86,000 as we go into FY19. This is a forecasted deficit spend with some expenditure, or some changes that have happened with the city and the district dissolving our long-term agreement at the city. And we're hoping that that number, as we move into our revised budget, is better than it is. But still, in the end, we are projecting a estimated fund balance in our community service fund of about $350,000, which is a good position to be in from a community service perspective. Our other funds, our capital projects fund. Here, we're spending down our referendum proceeds from 2015 as well as our abatement bonds. So that's the $1.8 million in projected expenditures over revenues. The other portion of that revenue is the capital projects levy that we receive through our levy annually. So at the end of FY19, we're projecting about an $875,000 balance in our capital projects fund, which will go towards additional capital projects and be melded together with our long-term facilities plan as we move forward. The internal service fund is where we house our self-funded medical plan and our self-funded dental plan, as well as our OPEB trust. So as we go into next year, those two, both our internal service funds, our medical and dental are operating in a very good position. We're projecting surpluses at this point in time in those, both those funds. And then our OPEB trust is there to pay our ongoing other post-employment benefits for our retirees and anybody that has access to our retirement plan post-employment. Our debt service, that's made up of our annual amortization schedules that have been, that are ongoing debts that we pay for bonds that have been passed. And as we've accumulated those over the years, we're projecting a fund balance in those surplus as we levy 105% of those to make sure we have enough funds in those, in that account to pay the debts that are there every year. Are there any questions?
Matt, is this information available on the district website?
Good question. So there, this information will be posted on our district website under Business and Finance, and will be available to the public as soon as tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Now we move into the business action items portion of our agenda. And our first item is to approve the 2018-19 budget that Mr. Hammer just outlined for us. Do I have any motion to approve the 2018-19 budget?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sampson, seconded by Riddle. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Hammer, I'm going to look to you for some information. We have a resolution on long-term facilities maintenance, but if you could give us some background before we make a decision on that?
Annually, we have to approve our long-term facilities maintenance plan, which is what used to be our health and safety and deferred maintenance monies. So annually, by July 31st, school districts have to approve these plans. So tonight, we have a plan that projects about $1.3 million in spending in FY19, and then about $1.2 million in spending there in the next nine years going forward for your approval tonight.
Move the resolution to adopt the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Sampson, seconded by Stark. And this is a resolution, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
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 The resolution has been passed. Mr. Hammer, I'm going to look to you again to give us some background on the Ties dissolution and the sales of the Ties building and NJPA closing.
Yeah, so tonight, there's a resolution in front of you that is for the dissolution and ongoing sale of the Ties building. The main highlights in that resolution are that Fridley School District will not be on the hook for more than $20 per student in costs via the resolution, assuming that the NJPA deal goes through. And then the district has ongoing, until the sale of the Ties building as we move forward, a cap of $3 per student that we will be liable for, and no more, as we move forward into FY19 as the Ties dissolution process finishes up.
I move the resolution authorizing execution of legal documents relating to the Ties dissolution.
Second.
Motion by Sampson, seconded by Riddle. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Sampson?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution passed. Dr. Flathman, I'm going to ask you to talk about the Ties withdrawal, which is a
So you might remember that a year ago, we put in our intent to withdraw. And therefore, we also, last month, had to say that we would stay in, given the fiscal sense that it made for us to stay in for this dissolution. However, if this dissolution does not happen the way we hope that it happens, we also want to make sure that we could withdraw again at the end of the next fiscal year on July, or June 30th, 2019. So this resolution speaks to that.
I move the resolution to withdraw from the Ties consortium, effective July 1st, 2019, if the NJPA Ties proposal is not executed in FY19.
Second.
We have a motion by Sampson, seconded by Stark. And will this the resolution? So clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
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 Resolution is passed. Mr. Hammer, I'm going to ask you to introduce the next resolution approving the Northeast Metro Intermediate School District 916's Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan.
So as being a member of the Northeast Metro 916 Intermediate School District, intermediate school districts have the authority to access that long-term facilities maintenance revenue with approval of their member districts. This is a resolution approving that authority. Our cost is about $3,155 per student for FY1920 revenue.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Resolution moved by Sampson, seconded by Stark. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Sampson?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Resolution carried. Our final resolution for the evening is accepting gifts that have been contributed to the Fridley School District. The following persons have donated to Hayes Elementary for a total of $277.80. David Haushild, Andy Rodill, and Deanna Roth. The following persons donated to Fridley Middle School for a total of $30. Leah Likness. And the following persons donated to Fridley High School for a total of $100. Nancy Bleagan, Craig Moss, Minneapolis Skyline Triptych worth $1,200. I don't know what a triptych is.
It's a three-panelled painting.
Oh, thank you. The following person's donated to the Nutritional Services Department for a total of $500, and that is from Passion Church. Do I have a motion to accept the gifts from our Fridley community members?
I would like to move the resolution to accept the gifts, and I'd like to thank the donors for their contributions.
Second.
Motion made by Sampson, seconded by Riddle. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Sampson?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Resolution carried. Mr. Hammer, if you could talk us through the approval of the lead-in water management plan.
So there's new legislation that requires a management plan for lead-in water to be approved by July 1st, 2018. Our school district has had a management plan in place for many years, and we've been testing, at least by the required times, every five years. Tonight, we're putting a plan in front of you for your approval of the Fridley School District Management Plan for Lead-in Water.
Move to approve the plan?
Seconded.
We have a motion by Riddle and seconded by Sampson to approve the lead-in water management plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. I'm going to invite Jennifer Clausman up to the podium to talk about the approval of the 2017-19 nutritional services contract.
Thank you. Actually, the next three are motions to approve all of our settlements that we reached with our SEI-represented groups. All three tentative agreements that we reached are within the parameters that were set by the board and are consistent with the other agreements that we've reached with our other bargaining units. So I'm just asking that the board approve those, and certainly want to compliment the members of our staff that served on those bargaining teams. They all worked incredibly hard to quickly reach resolutions.
Thank you.
I will move the first contract, the nutritional services contract, for approval.
Second.
And I do want to echo your comments. I think that all of the groups were very collaborative in looking for solutions. So I thank them all for their efforts.
So with that, we have a motion to approve the 2017 through 2019 nutritional services contract. Motion by Sampson, seconded by Stark. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carried.
I move we approve the clerical contract for 2017, 2019.
Second.
The motion, moved by Sampson, seconded by Stark for the clerical contract. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carried.
And I move we approve the 2017 through 2019 professional, paraprofessional contract as well.
Second.
Again, moved by Sampson, seconded by Stark. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? And that was the final on our contracts, but
I stuck around.
Okay. And what do you have first next?
Second reading of School Board Policy 903, and that is the Visitors to School and School-sponsored events. And I believe Dr. Flathman presented this last time. We did not have any corrections. And so I'm just again asking that the board approve this policy.
Do I have a motion to approve the Policy 903 Visitors to Schools and School-sponsored events?
Move to accept the second reading and adoption of Policy 903.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by Riddle, seconded by Stark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Next up, we have the Consent Agenda. This is an agenda of routine action items, including minutes of the regular school board meeting and work session held on May 15th, 2018, monthly financial reports, new contracts and amendments, leaves of absence, terminations, resignations, and retirements, the 2017-18 Q-COM report, the Minnesota Department of Education user access recertification for Lori Andler and Dr. Kim Heil as identified official with authority as of July 1st, 2018, termination agreement with the VIBA administrator, casual employee salaries, 2018 through 2019, the transportation contract, the agreement to provide special education and related services from 916, and the Local Energy Efficiency Program Joint Powers Agreement. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda?
Second.
I want to make just a note on there, one of the longtime employees, Karen Brisboy. She's been a secretary for many years, since 1991, I believe. So we certainly want to thank her for her many, many years of service.
Thank you, Chris. So we had a motion by Riddle and a second by Stark. All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Dr. Flathman, will you provide us with your final student enrollment report?
Yes. In your packet is the complete year-long list of 2017-18 grade level by enrollment sheet. This is the one that we take a look at very carefully on a monthly basis. You can see that what was a decline throughout the beginning of the year pretty much leveled off. And even though, you know, at the very last day, you actually, graduates are kind of pulled off, but we continue to have them in our ADMs. So we are feeling pretty strong. And as Matthew said earlier, it looks like we will end up the year with about 3,020 students, which is right around where we had projected for revised budgets. So I give you that report.
Thank you. Our final section of the meeting tonight is reports from school board members on the various committees they sit on. Up first, the Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting, which was held on May 16th. Mr. Riddle?
It was an interesting meeting. We actually, for the first time, met up at the Elk River. Their district head Their district headquarters there, due to some extra construction that was taking place at the Northwest office, they've got a really nice placing that they have up there for their facilities. Main things that we talked about, we talked a little bit about the final lottery program that has gone through for the Magnet School program. From that, really, the effects to Fridley. We did have an additional, about thirty-eight students that are coming to us through the Magnet program, through Northwest Suburban. That's been about our average for the last several years, though the overall numbers in the Magnet Lottery program were a little bit down this year than they have been. But they were still within some very, very good numbers, over twelve hundred, I believe, students that were moving district, inside the district. So the collaborative, as to what it's designed for, is still working in that right. Some of the things we talked about specifically, that they had some of the year-end projects that they've done, obviously, they had the Step Up Mentorship Program, graduate celebration, and that's for the males graduating through similar programs where they do, they start generally typically in the ninth grade and learn a lot of leadership skills and work their way toward getting onto that post-secondary education and/or careers that they're working towards. So it's a very good program from that standpoint, and it has just been growing leaps and bounds under their leadership there. So the other big thing that went on was the Student Leadership Conference that was held in May fourteenth of it, and this is where students across, again, the district get together to talk, again, leadership, but they also do some extra contests in there. They do things, talking about career and college explorations, do creative storybook writings, debating, doing some educational games, some employability skills. And actually, some Fridley students were actually finished first place in the college career exploration event. We also took a third place in the employability skills interview contest, as well as the team for the Northwest Suburban Shark Tank, where they were looking at civic responsibilities. They had to solve a social issue by carting a creative product idea and went through almost the Shark Tank kind of interview process. And the team for Fridley High School, Team Unknown, finished in second place. So we certainly congratulate all those students from Fridley, but certainly all the students throughout the Northwest Suburban that took part in the leadership conference.
Interesting stuff happening. Next up, Schools for Equity in Education. Dr. Flathman?
Yeah, I attended this along with Jaiel Macklemore. This was kind of the wrap-up of what went on for the session that was our legislative session, and you know that our governor vetoed the bills that would have had the most impact. At that time, we were awaiting whether or not he would do anything in support of the teacher retirement, along with the other municipal retirement funds that they are kind of trying to right-size. And so, but he did do that, and so that is good news for the state. And as we move forward, I'm sure that many of the issues that were on the table that were not talked about or were eventually vetoed will obviously come up again in the next session. And if I will, if I may, at this particular time, also be able to say a very warm welcome to Dr. Kim Heil, who is sitting in the audience tonight, who will be present at this next meeting. So I am looking forward to continuing to have collaboration with her and watch her as she leads the Fridley School District. So thanks, Kim.
We're looking forward to that as well. Our final committee report is the Northeast Metro nine sixteen board meeting. I attend this board, and we're covering many of the similar things that we're covering at our board this time of year, which is approval of the FY nineteen budget. They're showing a budget surplus of approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the upcoming year, much of that a result of spending modifications made during building projects and ongoing educational operations. They approved their, or reviewed their tuition rates for the upcoming eighteen nineteen year. The rates vary by program, and the membership fee related to these tuition rates is unchanged. So that was outlined, there was no board action on that, however. And then also, they did, the board did vote to approve membership categories and the related costs and benefits associated with the categories within their membership and what those obligations are, and these are also unchanged from past years. So they also approved two contracts, one food service agreements, and then one with a collective bargaining agreement with their local seventy bargaining group, which is Operating Engineers, and then their local two eighty-four bargaining group, which is their support staff. So those contracts were approved. So kind of mirroring the same kind of business that we're doing at our meetings here this time of year. So for important future school board dates, we have the Northeast Metro nine sixteen Board Meeting on June twentieth. That meeting is also going to include a board retreat, so that's gonna be a very long meeting, but we're gonna combine it and do it all in one night. That's on June twentieth at six PM at the Bel Air School. The Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting is June twentieth at six fifteen. And the Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting is July seventeenth. The work session is at five-thirty in City Hall Conference Room A. The open forum is at seven PM in City Hall Conference Room A, and the business meeting is at seven-thirty PM in the City Council Chambers. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sampson, seconded by Stark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting is adjourned at eight-thirty PM. Thank you.